This time I call the September meeting of the County Commission to order. We have with us tonight the pastor of the Lincoln Baptist Church Reverend Tripp Goodwin to bring us our word of inspiration and our prayer. Preacher, I'll ask you to come to the podium and if you would, we'll remain standing for the national anthem. I'm here for the ladies and gentlemen. He just backed Mr. Clyde.
You'll be the same.
Let's pray. Lord God Almighty, you have made all the peoples of the earth for your glory to serve you in freedom and in peace. I pray that you would give to the people of our country and also to the people of our county a zeal for justice and the strength of forbearance, that we may use our liberty well and in accordance with your gracious purposes. I pray this through Jesus Christ our Lord, who lives and reigns with you and the Holy Spirit, one God forever and ever. Amen.
I pray the ladies and gentlemen of the United States of America and the United States of America, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item four on the agenda is the approval of the minutes of the previous meetings. I trust you read them, looked over them. Is there a motion that the minutes be approved as printed?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
That's second.
That's second, Mr. Chairman.
Motion by Commissioner Henderson, second by Commissioner Clyde. Any discussion on the motion? Chair is none, all in favor of the motion, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like, sign motion carried. Item number five is the approval of tonight's agenda. Is there a motion that we approve the agenda as printed?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
That's second, Mr. Chairman.
Motion by Commissioner Tankersley, second by Commissioner Henderson. Any discussion on the motion of the agenda? Chair is none, all in favor of the motion, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like, sign motion carried. Departmental reports is item six. Six A is the Office of Emergency Services Director, Casey Breen.
Good evening, Chairman and Commissioners. You have my printed reports. I will note that I added a updated report from July on the districts that we responded to. We found some errors in there. The chairman pointed those out and we got that corrected. And so I wanted to provide you with those. Other than that, I have no additions. Unless they're quick.
Any questions to Director Breen on his report? That being done, we thank you. Me is Director Latrell Glaze. He is at the recreation complex. This is being a part of his season. I understand we got what, 300 or so participants out there on certain nights. Playing what you have in your report. If you have any questions, contact me, our Director Glaze. Item C is the Finance Department Director Dawes.
Chairman and Commissioners, you have my printed reports. The only thing I have to add is we have started our FY '22 audit and it's our goal to have that end by the end of November at the latest.
Okay, I was looking to see, I think on the, on the report, we also have a call meeting on September the 20th at 4:30 in the afternoon.
Yes, sir.
That will be held in the conference room and that meeting will be for the purpose of amending the FY '22, '23 budget and setting the mileage rate for your tax bills to go out and money to operate the county. And I know in the Lincoln Journal, I think this week, is the Board of Education, the Board of Commissioners, and the Development Authorities' five-year tax history is in there. I hope everybody read it. I was really, really good. We're gonna talk about that at a different time. Any questions to Director Dawes? If not, then we sit there. Okay, item seven.
Sixty.
We need to vote.
Sir, sixty.
I miss that. Six, six, I scratched through that thing before I got to it. Director.
Yes, Chairman, members of the board, you have my written reports from Public Works. I don't have anything to add to those reports. So if you have questions, I'd be more than happy to answer those.
Any question, Director Seymour. If not, thank you. And you have on your tab E, you have a report from our County Extension Director. You can read that. Ms. Robin Stewart, good to see you back. I know you've been a worldwide traveler, going to a lot of conferences, learning how to ride a horse and all that stuff over the last few years. Thank you, Robin. You always do a good job. There a motion then that we go into our public hearing?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Have a motion as I second.
That's second, Mr. Chairman.
Motion by Commissioner Clyde, second by Commissioner Henderson. Any discussion on the motion to go into a public hearing? Chair is none, all in favor of the motion, let it be known by saying aye. All opposed, like, sign motion carried. Director Seymour.
Chairman, on August the 8th of 2022, the Planning Commission heard the following request. Advocate is Katherine Kirby, 1718 Gravel Road, better known as MAP 6, parcel 023, consisting of 9.86 acres of A1 agriculture. She's applied for a special use to operate a forest and dog rescue on that property. And the recommendation from my planning commission is approval. And that recommendation was unanimous, Chairman. If you recall, this item was tabled last month so that Ms. Kirby could be here, and she is here.
Is Ms. Kirby here?
She is, yes, sir. Yes, she's here. So the recommendation is approved, Chairman.
Okay, we have a recommendation. Ms. Kirby, anything you'd like to say? Let me ask you a question. Come on up to this podium because we won't pick you up if I don't. I ain't got nothing really to ask you, other than to go up there. Is it not true that you work for the ambulance service?
Yes, sir, I do. I've worked for Lincoln County EMS, for PC, and then also worked for GoCross EMS.
You could have left that part off.
Yes, sir.
We need, we need you.
Well, thank you.
Mr. Tankersley.
Ms. Kirby, how many horses are you in?
Well, I have just under 10 acres there, so I'm figuring anywhere from one to two acres per horse so that I don't overbear the weight. So that's what I'm looking at. Yes, sir.
Okay, I don't think we got a problem. Is there anyone here that would like to speak against this special use? Who would like to speak against it? Anybody want to speak for it? You already have.
Yes, sir.
If not, we won't keep you. Thank you for coming.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you for working at the ambulance services.
Yes, sir.
Both of them, we appreciate your service.
Absolutely. My pleasure. Y'all good last night? Thank you.
Is there a motion we accept the recommendation of the Planning Commission for this special use?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Tankersley, second by Commissioner Clyde. Any discussion on the motion? Chair is none, all in favor of the motion, let it be known by saying aye. All opposed, like, sign motion carried. Is there a motion that we come out of our public hearing?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
The second.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Henderson, second by Commissioner Tankersley. Any discussion on the motion? Chair is none, all in favor of the motion, let it be known by saying aye. All opposed, like, sign motion carried. The next item is, item eight is the First Responders Appreciation Day. Ms. Pam Carter, if you'll come to the podium, state your name and address, and you have five minutes to tell us what kind of food you're gonna feed us.
Oh, it's good food. My name is Pam Carter, and I am the Assistant Manager of Poppa's South Country Cafe. We've been there for a year now. This is the seventh year that they're hosting the first of the First Responders Appreciation Luncheon. And I'm reaching out to everyone, you know, that's here that could come out and show their appreciation to our first responders. They do work very hard and they get not very many thank yous from the general public unless, you know, we get called upon to have to have them. So I would like to personally invite each of your commissioners to come out and bring your friends, your family. There's no cost in the food. We're gonna have barbecue chicken, fried chicken, and also fried fish. And so you get your food, dessert, and your drinks at no cost. When the way of doing it, we're collecting donations to be able to give to the Lincoln County EMTs and so forth. And the two fellows who's putting this on have been in the county for over 30 years, so they are very responsive to this. Matter of fact, Cookie, who is the cook, he was saved by our local EMTs by airlifting him when he had a major heart attack. So he's very appreciative of what all the first responders did. I would like to ask y'all to come and speak about 1 o'clock just to say thank you to these people so that they hear it from everybody, not just from the general public. So if you can, you know, plan to come, we would greatly appreciate it. And it's gonna be open to the public, no cost, donations only, and we just hope that everybody can come and enjoy it.
Well, we appreciate that.
I have a question, Mr. Chairman.
We always like to eat, Commissioner Clyde.
I was just gonna ask, Ms. Carter, did it have an account set up to accept the funds? Is that?
I'm not sure how he's got that done, but he's done it over the years. So he's got something, you know, he runs through to run the money through for that. So I can have Cookie to get in touch with you, but like I said, he's been doing it and he told me who he worked through to get that taken care of, because I asked him about it and he said it was all set up to be taken care of, to collect the donations. So I can verify that and get back to you.
All right. Thank you.
Commissioner Clyde, I know that Sheriff told me that they gave, I think the ambulance people, fire and rescue anyway, some money, and they gave, I think, some for the Sheriff's Department. And he told me that he was asking to give Sheriff's Department to the limits, what he said, back to them. But they do make a contribution every year to our firefighters and all of them.
And this is just to bring the public together, you know, to really honor, you know, our firefighters, police officers, EMTs, you know, everybody to say, hey, you know, we do appreciate what you do, especially with the last two years of everything going on, you know. They have been really, put their lives on the line for everything, so.
Ms. Carter, we appreciate y'all doing this for the, raising a little money for our first responders, and we appreciate the invitation for the commission to be there. I told you that I will be out of town, but I'll be there in spirit.
We'll appreciate it.
I'll send Captain Taylor down to eat my pork.
Okay. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item nine is repair work for the showers at the jail, Captain Taylor. Captain Taylor, wouldn't make it too brief if you can, because we're familiar with what you're talking about.
Chairman, Captain, thank y'all again. We have a quote from H&amp;H Industrial here in Lincoln County to redo three showers in the jail. The funds for those, for that item is gonna come out of the jail fee fund. We just need approval from the county commissioners to do that.
This is an amount of $6,000?
Yes, sir.
Be paid from the jail fee fund?
Yes, sir.
Is there a motion that we honor to request from Captain Taylor for the repairs to the showers in the jail?
So moved.
That's second.
That's second, Mr. Chairman.
Motion by Commissioner Tankersley, second by Commissioner Henderson. Any discussion?
I'm gonna put this.
Commissioner Clyde.
It includes three showers, right?
Three showers, yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Any other question? All in favor of the motion, let it be known by saying aye. All opposed, like, sign motion carried. Thank you.
Thank you.
You can leave.
Yes, sir.
All right, item number 10 is the FY '23 Triple-A Co-op and Grant Director Blunt. You can do the same thing. You were with us last week, too.
Good evening, Commissioners. Y'all have before y'all the contract that was sent to us by the CSRA Triple-A for $53,475, and that's a grant that the Commissioners match 10%. And I'd like for y'all to approve that, please.
That's an amount of $53,475?
Yes, sir.
In this contract with the CSRA, R.C.?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I think we've discussed this one. Is there a motion that we grant the approval of her to get this grant of $53,475?
I make the motion, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
That's second, Mr. Chairman.
Motion by Commissioner Clyde, second by Commissioner Henderson. Any discussion on the motion? Chair is none, all in favor of the motion, let it be known by saying aye. All opposed, like, sign motion carried. The next one is the RFP for FY '23 EOA Grant Director Blunt.
For the last couple of years, we have received a grant for the CSRA EOA, and this year, there's an RFP out for $8,500 that I can apply for that will go against my salary, that will counter off of my salary, so.
I don't think we tearing that one down. Is there a motion that we accept the grant?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Got a motion as I second. Motion by Commissioner Tankersley, second by Commissioner Clyde. Any discussion on the motion? Chair is none, all in favor of the motion, let it be known by saying aye. All opposed, like, sign motion carried. Thank you, Ms. Blunt. You're welcome to leave, too. Technical modernization capital purchases, Director Johnny Walton.
Chairman, Commissioners, this is a request for $70,000. It's SLOX six firms to replace technology that's passed into life and to improve the county's technology reliability, speed, and supportability. This includes a dispatch recorder, new network switches, and some Wi-Fi improvements. And since we talked, work session last week, we had another older device fail on Friday and left elections down for most of the day. So this equipment does need to be replaced. And I respectfully request approval of the funding. Again, this is SLOX six money.
Okay, we discussed this last week, the work session. I think we're familiar with it. Is there a motion to approve of this $70,000 for what's listed they need to do in the IT department, will be paid for from SLOX six?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
That's second.
I'll second, Mr. Chairman.
Motion by Commissioner Henderson, second by Commissioner Tankersley. Any discussion? Chair is none, all in favor of the motion, let it be known by saying aye. All opposed, like, sign motion carried.
Mr. Chairman, I'm gonna abstain of that, I'm involved, because we may have to help him a little bit.
Okay, let the record show that Commissioner Clyde has abstained from the voting, and I will vote in the affirmative in his place. So it's got three votes. All right, the next one is the 13 is the Georgia Trauma Commission Training Micro Grant Director Brune.
Chairman and Commissioners, as discussed in the work session, this is a grant for training from Georgia Trauma Commission is administered by the Georgia EMS Association to teach pertinent courses, particularly a pre-hostile trauma life support course. It is enrollment dependent and it is open to the region, probably the state, but that grant could provide as much as $5,850. Tonight, I'm asking for permission to sign the appropriate document, applications for the funding and proceed with that. Then we'll come back later and ask. This is a reimbursement grant. There's no matching funds, but I'll come back and ask y'all to accept that money once the course is taught and the process is run.
Okay, we entertain a motion to allow him to apply for a maximum grant of $5,850 Georgia Trauma Commission. Is there a motion?
I make the motion, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
That's second, Mr. Chairman.
Motion by Commissioner Clyde, second by Commissioner Henderson. Any discussion? Chair is none, all in favor of the motion, let it be known by saying aye. All opposed, like, sign motion carried. Item number 13 is Georgia Trauma Commission Training Micro Grant Director Brune.
I believe we're at number 14, Mr. Chairman, which is the GMA Generator Grant Project. We discussed this at length. It's a large number with a lot of infrastructure being potentially protected through this grant. It is a rare 10% matching opportunity. It is scalable if we receive the funding. The sky, the limit number is $481,100 with a $48,110 match by the county. That would, should I go through where we're on place generators or y'all familiar enough? Okay, I'm asking for permission for the Chairman and I to sign the documentation, including the grant applications for that money.
Okay, this free grant application with GMA?
Yes, sir.
I understand it could take as much as 12 to 18 months?
Yes, sir.
To know anything. It is a grant approximately $481,100 with a 10% match. If we get that motion, we give him the authority to apply for the grant.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
That's second, Mr. Chairman.
Motion by Commissioner Tankersley, second by Commissioner Clyde. Any discussion on the motion? That being done, all in favor of the motion, let it be known by saying aye. Let's keep riding down here to number 15 now. Last on the EMT grant.
Yes, sir. Again, this is Georgia Trauma Commission money administered by GMSA. It is a grant to teach an EMT course, which we are slated for beginning in January. Again, it is enrollment dependent as for the amount that will be used. It will be between $5,250 and $9,150 depending on enrollment. This is no matching funds. It is a reimbursement grant, and I'm seeking approval to complete all documentation and application for that money.
Okay, and this is up to between $5,000 and $9,000 depending on the amount of people you get in your school.
Yes, sir. Enrollment dependent.
That's, that's a good thing. What we try and do is grow out on EMTs and paramedics and whatever. Okay, is there a motion that we allow him to apply for the grant?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
That's second, Mr. Chairman.
Motion by Commissioner Tankersley, second by Commissioner Henderson. Any discussion on the motion? Chair is none, all in favor of the motion, let it be known by saying aye. All opposed, like, sign motion carried. Item 16, relicense the sheriff's, brings it with the Federal Communication Commissioner Director Brune.
Yes, sir. We experienced interference reciprocally on the received side of the sheriff's office, primary dispatch frequency. It's a problem that we're addressing through working with the county that was interfering with us. They've been, this White County, they've been very helpful. They've cut back their transmitter power and their frequency of transmission, really helping us out. The way we get out of this is by rebanding our frequencies, not just the sheriff's office. We're looking to do all of them. We're gonna move them 6.25 kilohertz, either above or below, and we're going to bring all radio frequencies under one licensure under the Board of Commissioners. That'll just help moving forward to keep licensure.
I failed to write this down, I guess, you know. What does that cost in us to relicense?
Less than $2,500.
Approximately, not over $2,500, is that what you're saying?
Yes, sir.
Okay, is there a motion that we allow him to relicense the sheriff's department frequencies?
I make the motion, Mr. Chairman.
That's second.
That's second, Mr. Chairman.
Motion by Commissioner Clyde, second by Commissioner Henderson. Any discussion on the motion? Chair is none, all in favor of the motion, let it be known by saying aye. All opposed, like, sign motion carried. Thank you, Director Brune. Item 17, generator for Public Works Office, Director Seymour.
Chairman, members of the board, I am asking for funding to pay for a generator replaced at the Public Works Office. The Public Works Office houses the main computer and components that operates the water system. And so we're trying to alleviate some service outage issues there. That price is $13,600, and those firms would be paid for out of the administrative fee from solid waste.
Okay, you heard the request. We talked about this one last week, too, 13. I had $13,000, we had that $600. That was a 13, 600.
Yes, sir. $13,600, yes.
I just wondered if it was going up, way things going up, $13,600 for administrative fee from the solid waste. Is there a motion?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Tankersley, second by Commissioner Clyde. Any discussion on the motion? Chair is none, all in favor of the motion, let it be known by saying aye. All opposed, like, sign motion carried. Number 18, control valve vault installation, Director Seymour.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. This is a change order that was done, was done previously, I believe it was back in December, that allowed us to spend approximately 38, or 40, I'm sorry, $40,000 out of the water fund to replace a control valve issue that we've got down in front of the city water plant. After we excavated the ground and looked to see what we had, there's some issues with the piping that's gonna have to be addressed. And so the price obviously went up. It went up to a total of $68,484.70 from the previous $40,000, which is a difference of about $27,000, it's a change. I am asking that y'all approve the $68,484.70 as a whole to come from the water fund.
$27,000 what? That's the total amount?
That is the total amount.
You're asking us tonight to approve an additional $27,671?
That is correct. Yes, sir.
And that'll be paid for the water fund?
Yes, sir.
Is there a motion?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
That's second, Mr. Chairman.
Motion by Commissioner Henderson, second by Commissioner Collins and Clyde. Any discussion on the motion? Chair is none, all in favor of the motion, let it be known by saying aye. All opposed, like, sign motion carried. Item 19, well development at Montego Point in Reed, Director Seymour.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. We learned about two weeks ago that there were some grant funds available through the Governor's Office of Planning and Budgeting for future population growth. And so I bring to you tonight a application to apply for that grant in the amount of This would be to develop four wells. If y'all recall, the Reed contract allowed us to have first right of refusal for two more wells that the Reed's own, that we would develop those. And then we have two wells in Montego Point that we actually own when we bought that water system that we would develop, which would help our water production to help feed our growth population with water. 25% of that total amount would be a match fund, which totals, I think, $339,000. We have talked about where that's gonna come from. There's a couple of different sources, but we don't have to make that decision tonight. Once we, if we get the grant, and I'm hoping we do, I think we got a pretty good chance of getting this grant, we can decide at that point in time where these local funds would come from. We have a couple of options, and those options being, you know, ARP funds or GFA funds. There's a couple of options that we can look at as to where we get those funds from. What I'm asking tonight is the approval to apply for the grant of the $1,243,000. What I'm asking tonight is the approval to apply for the grant of the one, one million two hundred and forty-three thousand dollars.
We are, I know this is covered from Governor Kemp's.
Correct.
Office of Planning and Budgeting. What, what, what do they call this?
Is ARP A money, or is actually?
ARP what?
ARP A, I think, is the acronym they're using. Is that correct? Director Dawson?
Chairman, it's the, the official designation is State and Local Rescue, State and Local Recovery Fund Grant.
I'm sorry. It's federal dollars that were handed out to the state.
Clark, be sure that you get the actual name that he just said from this for the minutes.
Yes, sir.
That we'll, that we'll apply for this, that, um, that we come in, I'm not gonna reiterate it. We know that, that three hundred and ten thousand dollars will come from local parts, probably some of ARP and some water fund, but the local part would be just ten percent, about three hundred and eighteen thousand.
That's correct.
If we get it, and I think the application has to be in tomorrow, deadline.
That is correct, Chairman.
And we got it ready to go in?
Yes, sir. It is ready.
We ready. Okay, is that a motion that we apply for the grant from the state, uh, to do these well projects?
I so moved, Mr. Chairman.
Our motion is our second?
I'll second, Mr. Chairman.
Motion by Commissioner Clyde, second by Commissioner Henderson. Any discussion on the motion?
One question, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Clyde?
Director Seymour, what's our chance? Have you got any clues what kind of chance we gotta get?
I, I don't know a percentage chance that, that we'll get it, but I can tell you that the project fits every aspect, uh, of the scope of what they're wanting to do. Um, the only thing that may hurt us a little bit, and we've kind of counteracted, that is the census numbers. We all know that the census numbers for twenty-twenty have been down all over the United States because it was done during COVID. Um, so our census numbers do show a decline in population. However, um, our water users have grown drastically in the last five years. Um, and then our building permit for single-family dwellings has gone up about eighty-eight percent in the last five years. So, uh, we've counteracted the census numbers with what we know where our growth has been, and so we feel pretty good, uh, we feel pretty good about the application. We feel like it's, it's a good project. Um, you know, with the amount of money we're asking for and what we're asking it for, we, we feel like it fits the program perfectly.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
I got it.
Commissioner Tankersley?
If we do get this amount of money, is most of this for the infrastructure of the wells?
It's for all of it, yes. It's for the, it's for the full wells. Uh, it, it includes SCADA, which allows, you know, it's my main computer that y'all just approved the generator for, to be able to talk these wells, to have them to cut them on, to cut them off. It, it will also actually help in the production of water, which will also decrease the amount of money that we spend toward buying water from the city. It trades a little bit off of, of what they're doing, yes.
Will, will this amount of funds complete the project?
It will complete it, yes, sir. That, that includes the Montego wells, just real quick. The Montego wells, we bought, and they're sitting just as they were originally. Um, it will also, um, pay for demolishing, uh, there's an old tank out there and the old wellhouses, and they'll demolish those and build new wellhouses completely. Yes, sir, it will, it will complete it.
Any other questions? I would like to. Thank the Finance Director Dawson, as well as Director Seymour, and our engineering firm, Chip McGahy, with the EMI. Uh, they've gotten this all together over the course of the last two, two and a half weeks. They've had to crunch all these numbers and, and, and get it, get it done, because we know the deadline is tomorrow. I understand we have finished it, and we're ready to hit the button to send it. Is that correct? Would you also send it, Director Dawson, to both commissioners, the application? If you just followed your email?
Yes, sir.
To them, and they can read it? So, they can read all about it. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Chair, is none, all in favor of the motion, let it be known, saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like, sign, motion is carried. Item number twenty, lawnmower and equipment, Public Works, Director Seymour.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, um.
Is that for Public Works, or is that for building grounds?
Well, buildings and grounds, but.
Because on the Public Works, okay.
Yes, sir. Um, a couple of weeks ago, we had a mower that was about a little over ten years old, um, motor locked down on it. And I'm asking, uh, the mower to approve, uh, the purchase of a new mower. Uh, under the, um, Puskavarna Fleet, uh, Government Fleet Program, you, if you buy two other pieces of equipment, you get twenty-five percent off the mower. Um, and so I'm asking for a total of ten thousand six hundred and sixteen dollars and twenty-three cents. That includes the mower, a, uh, blower, and a weed eater. And if you look at the breakdown, um, the total price is actually cheaper than what the original mower cost was, and we're getting two extra pieces of equipment. So I'm asking, uh, that ten thousand six hundred and sixteen dollars and twenty-three cents, uh, be approved out of the, uh, Buildings and Grounds budget. It's actually in the budget, uh, but for the amount, it has to come before y'all for approval, Chairman.
Okay, is that a motion?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Our motion is our second?
I'll second, Mr. Chairman.
Motion by Commissioner Tankersley, second by Commissioner Henderson. Any discussion on the motion? Chair, is none, all in favor of the motion, let it be known, saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like, sign, motion is carried. Uh... This next one is a recommendation from the grand jury. We discussed this the other day. I have talked to Mr. Swain. Have you heard back from him? That, um... Well, what he says, I talked to him, why, I didn't let you know, but I haven't heard from him, so, but not, but he talked real favorable. What I'd like to do is ask that, that we pay up to, up to seventy-five dollars for the chief bailiff and sixty dollars for the regular bailiffs. And the grand jury asked it to be fifty dollars per day for the bailiffs and seventy-five dollars a day for the chief bailiff. And we having a hard time getting bailiffs. So if anybody knows of anybody that wants to be a bailiff, they need to contact the sheriff. But that's my recommendation, to be up to seventy-five, not over that. Now I'm asking for a motion.
Just to be sure, I'm clear, Mr. Chairman. We said up to seventy-five dollars for the chief bailiff and sixty dollars for the others?
Yes.
I'd make that motion.
Second?
I'll second, Mr. Chairman.
Motion by Commissioner Clyde, second by Commissioner Henderson. Any discussion? Chair, is none, all in favor of the motion, let it be known, saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like, sign, the motion is carried. Is that a motion that we adjourn?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Our motion by Commissioner Henderson, second by Commissioner Clyde. Any discussion on the motion? Chair, is none, all in favor of the motion, let it be known, saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like, sign, the motion to adjourn is here. We adjourn.